Thank you. Please, please. Thanks.
All right, we'll just wait another minute or two and then we'll get started. Thank you. Okay. Hi, Jerry. Perfect. All right, so Jerry is here in person. The only one we're missing is Mike. It's seven o'clock right now. I'll wait another minute or two and then we'll get moving. Somebody might want to try and text him, see if he's having trouble getting in.
Yeah, I just texted him. I haven't got an answer yet.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, I think it's seven oh two. Before I call the meeting to order, we'll just briefly mention some of the, hopefully best practices as we muddle through a remote meeting like this. Again, please mute your phone until you're ready to talk or speak. If you're called on, or if you wish to say something, just unmute your phone. We will in just a moment. After we open the meeting, Lynn will do a roll call vote, or excuse me, a roll call to make sure we have quorum. Again, be sure and unmute to talk and then mute when you're done. And then anything we vote on tonight will be a roll call vote. So that's protocol for this type of meeting. And finally, as we get into some discussion, we will ask that you, if you have something you want to say, just state your name. And if several people state their names, we'll just kind of go in order or whatever. And I'll just kind of be a traffic cop and keep people able to speak and moving ahead. Joining us tonight, a city attorney is here as well, Scott Royste. And Alan Teo is going to present here in a minute, as will Jeremy. So let's call the meeting to order. And we'll start with the invocation. Councilman Gross.
Jeff Gross speaking. As I think about the unique circumstances we're facing this evening with this online meeting, more importantly, the unique circumstances and difficulties due to the coronavirus that our city, our county, our state, and our country is facing, I'd like to read four verses from Psalm 61, a Psalm of David. That'll be our prayer for this evening. "Oh God, listen to my cry; hear my prayer. From the ends of the earth I will cry to you for help, for my heart is overwhelmed. Lead me to the towering rock of safety, for you are my safe refuge, a fortress where my enemies cannot reach me. Let me live forever in your sanctuary, safe beneath the shelter of your wings. In Christ's name I pray, amen."
All right, we'll recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. All right, I'll ask Clerk Treasurer to do a roll call for establishment of quorum.
Counselor Dobbins?
I'm present.
Counselor Willhite?
Unmute.
Present.
Present.
Counselor Gross?
Present.
Counselor Finch?
Present.
Counselor Clandaris? Counselor Fresh is in attendance here. Counselor Quantz?
Present.
And then we also have Attorney Royste.
Present.
Jeremy Skater?
Present.
Alan Teo?
All right, so we do have a quorum. There are six here. Four votes will be necessary to take any action tonight. So again, let the minutes reflect. Counselor Clandaris is absent. Jack, let us know if you hear back from him. If he's having trouble getting on, let me know, okay?
Yep.
All right, thank you. All right, so let's move into the approval of the minutes from the March 16 meeting. Those have been presented. Hopefully, you've had a chance to go through those. Are there any corrections or adjustments to those minutes?
I would move to approve.
Motion's been made by Counselor Fresh. Is there a second?
Cindy, I will second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, I'm sorry.
Aye.
We've got to do a roll call vote. My mistake.
Okay, since Mr. Fresh motioned and Ms. Dobbins second, I'll take a roll call for Mr. Willhite. I don't know. Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. Finch?
Yes.
Ms. Quantz?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for being patient with us here as we move ahead. I think we got through our first vote and all good. I would like to recognize that there are no visitors here tonight. Again, between myself and Clerk Treasurer Lynn Christiansen and Counselor Fresh, it's the three of us in here tonight. So there's plenty of distance between us, I might add. All right, let's move into the reports, oral and written communications. The March Fund Report, I think you've got copies of. Lynn, are there any comments regarding that fund? Fund report?
No, since it was the March one, we hadn't seen it. Hadn't seen a hit of the revenue yet. It'll be a little bit more telling at the end of April when we do that fund report.
All right, thank you. And I might add, with regards, I did, I do believe I sent out, or my most recent executive order was sent out, that extended our emergency declaration and our stay home pay order for another two weeks. If that, I will make sure that that's sent out. But I just wanted to let you all know that our previous order expired last Friday. This one will go for two weeks, which should be done on May 1st. And the state's order that came out today will be done on May 2nd. So will be pretty coincident with them. All right. There's no unfinished business. Let's move into new business. And we'll start with the conflict of interest statements. These are annual disclosures that are asking for the approval of the council, or at least just the acknowledgement of the council that there is a conflict of interest. Lynn Christiansen, George Clemmons, James Emmons, Diane Quantz, and myself. So those have been presented. Are there any questions? Was there, or is there a motion to acknowledge those interest disclosure statements, conflict of interest?
Diane, I'll move that we acknowledge those.
All right, motion's been made by Diane. Is there a second?
Cindy, I'll second.
Cindy, second. All right, I'll ask Lynn to take a roll call vote for the acknowledgement of the conflict of interest disclosure statements.
Willhite?
Aye.
Gross?
Yes.
Finch?
Aye.
Fresh?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Item number two, the acres petition for voluntary annexation. I believe Jeremy's going to ask that that be tabled. Jeremy, you want to go ahead and explain that?
Given that annexation, whenever you presented a petition that starts a timeline, which ultimately requires you to have excitement in a public hearing, seeing as we're not really unsure of how we would hold that public hearing at this point, I'd like to table it until, you know, maybe next month or the following month. And so we have a better footing to hold a public hearing rather than trying to do it in the fall.
All right, so I'll ask for a motion to table the acres petition for voluntary annexation.
I'd so move.
Moved by Counselor Fresh. Is there a second?
Jeff Gross.
Cindy.
Jeff Gross, second. Any further discussion? I'll have Lynn take a roll call vote.
Willhite?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
Dobbins?
Aye.
Quantz?
Aye.
All right, thank you. The ayes have it. Let's move on to item number three. This is a CF1 review for abatement with the Dalton Corporation. Jeremy, I'll let you go ahead with that.
This is just their yearly tax abatement request. I believe this should be their last year. I looked back at their application and they were purchasing from equipment. This is for personal property. So they were purchasing it in over a two-year period. So I think their last purchase of equipment would have happened in '09, or which would have been that, or '10. So this would make it that kind of last year. They did purchase the permit that they said they would. And I would recommend continuing tax abatement at this point.
All right. Are there any questions?
This is Diane. So does that mean they're at like a 10% for next year?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's typically phased in over 10 years and it starts high and goes down to the end. And I would assume that if this is the last year, it is 10%.
Yeah, and personal property actually goes down anyhow. So when you're in this leave last year, it's already devalued quite a bit. We know the type of machinery or equipment that they're abating. So not a lot of value there in the first place. But nonetheless, so far they're abating.
All right. Are there any other questions? All right, is there a motion to approve the Dalton Corporation's CF1? For probably their 10th and final year of abatement?
Cindy Dobbins, I would move to approve.
Cindy moves to approve. Is there a second?
Jack?
Jack Willhite seconds the motion. Any further discussion? I'll ask Clerk Treasurer to do a roll call vote.
Gross?
Yes.
Finch?
Aye.
Fresh?
Aye.
Quantz?
Aye.
Good.
All right, the ayes have it, six to zero. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item number four. Again, this is a similar approval, although this is early in the Little Crow Lofts 10-year abatement. Jeremy, you want to take this over? They're in their fourth year.
One form, this is for real property improvement, for them turning what used to be a little pro manufacturing into affordable housing. This is a family project. They roughly spent $6.4 million to rehab, I think, 41 different units. So they spent the money that they claimed they would in the original tax abatement request. They are in their fourth year. No reason not to continue this tax abatement as well.
All right. Are there any questions?
Diane?
Yes. Go ahead, Diane.
I just wanted to, I wanted to let everybody know that I checked in with Jeremy today because I was concerned about some of the violations that we were hearing about. And so he checked up and they have addressed everything, except they haven't completed repairing the windowsill, which requires some brickwork that they need more climate weather enabled in order to be able to do. But the other issues that the tenants had raised have been addressed. And I just thought that would be important to look at as we're looking at this abatement.
No, I think that was important and I appreciate you checking into that, Diane. Anybody have any other questions? Or concerns?
Yeah, this is Jack.
Jack? Go ahead. Go ahead.
Yeah, so this was the one where we had a citizen show up a couple of months ago about parking. I take it, Diane, then, that that's been addressed as well?
Yes, it has been addressed. The junk cars have been removed and they are in compliance with the number of handicap spots.
Yep, that, to answer your question, Jack, yes, that was looked into. Jeremy, any, I know you checked with Dana and you're satisfied all that's been looked into, correct?
Yes, so we did take care of the abandoned cars. We worked with Little Crow Lofts, their management, to identify those cars that were abandoned or junked and made notice and removed those from the properties or the car vehicle owners removed those from the properties. The handicap parking is a little bit different in that they, the specific requirements they meet. I know there were some concerns about where they placed the handicap parking. Some of the residents wanted it placed somewhere else. But it's not within our ability to tell them where they can put them outside of. They have to be in the closest, as close as they can to access, which those parking spaces meet the requirements. We did look at them. So as far as I'm concerned, although they may not be where some resident wanted them, they are in compliance with the codes and laws associated with handicap parking spaces.
All right, thank you, Jeremy. Are there any other questions or comments regarding the Little Crow tax abatement? Again, this is the fourth year of the abatement. Hearing none, is there a motion to?
Diane, I'll make a motion now that we accept the abatement.
Is there a second?
This is Jack.
Jack seconds. Any further discussion? Clerk Treasurer will take a roll call vote.
Dobbins?
Aye.
Gross?
Yes.
Finch?
Aye.
Fresh?
Aye.
All right, thank you. The ayes have it, six to zero. All right, so we'll move into our final item of business tonight. This is a discussion and presentation by KEDCO with regards to a small business relief program that KEDCO and Mr. Teo have approached the city to participate in. And I had sent out some information earlier in the day. I think what I'll do is I'll let Alan talk a little bit about what KEDCO is proposing for the county. And then I will talk, we can all talk a little bit about some starting points for how the city may participate. And then maybe we can come to a consensus on this. But Alan, you can go ahead and get started on KEDCO's side of this.
All right, Mayor. Thank you for the invitation to be here with you all this evening. And Council members, we look forward to the discussion. I, this is a quick reminder. We did speak maybe a month or two ago about the KEDCO revolving loan fund. Just to explain that we have a revolving loan fund set up with, we have dollars available to lend. We have a loan committee. We have a bank that processes the loans. What we're, we'll talk about tonight, though, is different from the discussion we had, again, a month or two ago. And this is specific to generating, putting together funds that we can use either within the city of Warsaw specifically or throughout the county to help businesses with recovery and job retention. And so as the mayor said, we've put together a one-page overview of some parameters we propose for that program. But this, the general, the framework would be something that we can add to our revolving loan fund. We just need to have funds specific to the program. And so you may have seen in the paper, working through the county commissioners, we've applied for $250,000 from OCA, the Office of Community and Rural Affairs, that we will be able to use within the framework you see with the Small Business Relief Program. And of course, we're looking for others that would like to add dollars to this program, like the city. So we had just submitted an application to OCA last Tuesday or Wednesday and got a call from the mayor on Wednesday, Thursday. What do you think about, you know, we would find a way for the city of Warsaw to support business, a loan program for, to provide relief and help with job retention. So really, the discussion, seeing as the mayor said, is about whether the city would like to participate. Again, we have the structure in place to support taking in applications, processing applications, reviewing the applications. We have the team in place to make the outreach to companies in the area about this kind of relief, these kind of loans. The intent, though, is provide very specific targeted loans toward local businesses, 50 employees or fewer. And again, we may end up having multiple funding sources from, let's say, the OCA or from others. And there's some discussion of private individuals wanting to contribute funds. And we will, it'll be up to us as KEDCO to then make, keep those funds separate and work within whichever additional parameters each funding source needs to put in place. So for example, with the OCA program, their funds, if we are successful in obtaining funds from OCA, their requirement is zero interest loans for job retention among low to moderate income employees. So that's a very specific focus we would have with the OCA fund. Again, as other funding sources come together, we could have different requirements based on, again, what you or others are interested in. So that's a real high-level overview. We certainly, though, appreciate the needs that we see in the community. We know, of course, we've all heard about the federal programs being very popular and depleted very quickly. And so looking for how can we step in, provide support, and encourage companies to work through business recovery, which could be even moving to more online telework, e-commerce, those kind of setups. And then also for job retention, to help people, help business owners retain jobs, even if it's, for example, until they receive something like the paycheck protection program, for instance. So again, I think we've seen an opportunity and want to make sure we step in and support local business owners. And with that, I'll turn it back over.
Okay, and I do want to mention something. If there are, I know there are several of our council members who are business people in the community. And if you feel, and Mr. Royste, I'll ask you to jump in here as well. Is it appropriate to ask them to refrain from the discussion as a potential conflict of interest if there's a chance that they may want to apply for these loans?
I would say if they're planning to apply for a loan through KEDCO, they do have a conflict in voting on whether to approve the EDIT money going there, yes.
All right. So I would ask at this point if there's anyone that may have a conflict of interest that should abstain from the discussion and the vote tonight.
Cindy Dobbins, I would abstain.
All right, we'll note that. Thank you, Cindy. Anyone else? Okay, I appreciate that. I have been made aware of many communities throughout the state who are looking at programs like this. And again, our discussion now is how the city could participate. And, you know, what the, I want to know how the council feels about some of these points that I've kind of set up as just an initial starting point for discussion. Many communities in the state, again, are looking at these loans as kind of being loans that could help smaller companies that maybe aren't or weren't able to apply or didn't apply or don't have any other resources. And again, I think with the amount of these loans, it probably fits, as Alan suggested, smaller companies, 50 or less, and could be very small, down to one or two employees. Again, in presenting this to you, I feel, and again, this should be the first part of our discussion, but I'm looking at this not being a grant, but being a 0% or a low-interest loan. And again, we'll discuss that in a moment. These funds would come from EDIT, funds that are used to spur economic development. And these funds, again, I would expect to be repaid over a two- or three-year period. So that kind of gives you an idea of how, what the source of these funds would be. And again, they would certainly be used to help businesses that have been impacted negatively by the COVID restrictions that have been placed on the community and on the state and are causing a lot of distress within the business community. So that would certainly be the thought behind, getting behind this. I did talk to several mayors. I talked to a mayor that has, that actually did this program. They're doing it similar to the way we're doing or proposing to do it. And that's utilizing their Economic Development Group within the community to actually administer this. Their community is a participant, but is administered by the Economic Development Entity. And this particular city set up $100,000. And they actually, within a very short time, they were, most of those loans were, had been applied for and spoken for. So it was, it seemed to be pretty successful the way it had been set up in that community. So on the page I sent you all, Small Business Relief Program Draft, the, under what is the KEDCO Small Business Relief Program, the fourth bullet point I added to that, which basically talks about funds made available by the city of Warsaw for Cosiasko County-based businesses that are within the city limits of Warsaw, will be available for up to $10,000 at 0% interest with up to a 24-month term and no forgivable provisions. The first payment will be due 90 days after the closing of the loan. All other terms within this description would apply. So again, these are starting points. And I think maybe it's probably a good time to talk a little bit about these specific points. And if there's any thought or concern to maybe making some of it forgivable, looking at the cap, maybe going a low interest versus a zero interest, extending the term of the loan to maybe 36 months instead of 24, or capping it at 36. So I'll open it up for discussion at this point for those details.
This is Diane.
Go ahead.
I had a question. I really liked your introduction that we were setting up these loans to help businesses that might not otherwise have been able to get either one of the federal programs. But I don't see any. But I don't see anything within this framework that we would be giving priority to businesses that had not been able to secure funds in any other way. So how would we incorporate that?
Well, and I think that goes back to who's going to administrate it. And I had a question mark here tonight that, you know, is that something, is that a provision that maybe you want to, or a restriction that you want to put on the funds that are used, city funds that are used for city businesses? Alan, I don't think you've set up any disqualifiers in your, you know, what you've set up for this. Do you want to comment on that?
That's correct. And the way we have it set up is really so that we can review each, you know, opportunity and look for, you know, how can we help the business, you know, with the Bachelors Program to companies that can benefit? And so, I didn't contemplate including a hard and fast requirement that they have to provide, some kind of evidence that they were not successful. You know, obtaining the SBA loan funding, or perhaps the Paycheck Protection, we can certainly, for the city funding, you can include a requirement to that effect, but we had not included that, at least at the outset. But even thinking that these dollars may be helpful as a bridge loan until someone can obtain their other funding from like a Paycheck Protection Program, just in case that becomes an opportunity where, you know, perhaps, again, a company would otherwise, you know, go through a layoff, some kind of furlough, but with this kind of bridge support, we'll be able to keep people on board until they do secure the federal funding.
Yeah, and as we all know, they are negotiating to replenish that SBA fund for the CARES Act as we speak. In fact, I don't know, have they, did they do that today? They were talking about it. But yeah, that's a good point, because there's, you know, there's probably going to be at least a minimum of a couple of weeks if that's replenished, where someone can take advantage of that. And, you know, now already being four weeks into this, I think your point is well taken.
This is Diane, again. I think that all makes a lot of sense. I know sometimes when I've worked with the Scholarship Committee through the foundation, that sometimes we just put a line in there that says preference will be given to. And I just wonder if we might be able to just insert a line that would say something like, preference will be given to those businesses who have not yet received another source of funding. And that would kind of cover both things, allow it to be a bridge loan, but also, you know, not having people stack up several loans on top of each other, and then someone else not get anything.
It certainly makes sense, Alan, again, and even, you know, we can make sure that our business navigator is helping people identify those other kind of programs, you know, and just in case there are other better kinds of funding before they utilize the program.
Yeah, Diane, the only--
Yes, because I was just going to say, I certainly think it makes sense that money's not coming right away, and they may need something right now. And I don't have a problem with it being a bridge loan. I think my main concern is that they've already received something, not to pile things on top.
Right, and the only comment I would make is, it wouldn't be so much whether you've received as whether you've applied for, because I know, I think it's a different circumstance if someone has applied and, you know, they ran out of money, or they didn't receive it, but they were trying to apply, versus someone that has not applied. I think you just have to look at the overall status of the business and use all those factors. And again, that's, I think that's the advantage of having KEDCO administer this, is that they've probably got their checkmarks on what they're looking for. But again, I don't know, do any of the others feel like we should maybe put a qualifier in there with regards to if someone has secured other funding, be it an SBA loan or another type of loan? Or do you think we ought to just leave it up to the committee?
This is Jack.
Go ahead, Jack.
This is Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yes, I understand Diane's point here, but I'm not sure that I would take it quite as far as to say that would go to headline or anything like that, but I would surely give it strong consideration. You know, there's a lot, I'm sure there's a lot of things that have got to be thought of through providing these loans. And we definitely want the money to go to people who need it and need it quickly, all the things that Diane has said. But I'm not sure I would just disqualify somebody based on the fact they've already applied or gotten a loan somewhere else.
All right.
At the same time, I don't want to pile on, too, so.
Anybody else on that specific feature? Or should we move ahead? Okay, so capping the loans, I know KEDCO has got a $10,000 cap for working capital, or $20,000 for job retention. I felt like, and again, this is just, I'm just tossing it out there, that if we utilized or if we made available $100,000, that could fund 10 loans at $10,000. I just felt like $10,000 was a reasonable cap. And a couple of the folks, mayors that I've talked to that are doing this, had amounts in that ballpark that, again, were taken advantage of, that seemed to work for that size of business. So, but I mean, I'm open. You know, we could just do $50,000 and do $5,000 as a cap. This is a starting point, so I'd really like to have a little discussion on the cap and potentially the number of loans that could be given. And I suppose I should talk just for a moment about, these funds are intended as emergency relief. They are strictly for COVID-related hardships due to the restrictions. One of these agreements that I saw suggested that as soon as the governor rescinds his emergency, public health emergency, that the period for these loans is closed. And I don't know if we do it right then, because obviously, the impact is going to be felt much beyond that. But the purpose here is that we're not creating, as Alan stated from the beginning, we're not creating a revolving loan fund where, you know, these funds are going to stay in this emergency loan fund forever. My intention is that we make funds available as they are approved, then we will release those funds to KEDCO to distribute to the successful applicant. Then when those funds are paid back, those funds within 30 days will come back to the city. So the idea is, they're non-forgivable, and they would replenish eventually, again, depending on what period you all feel is good for this, they would replenish those funds. It just allows someone to utilize those funds in a very timely and a critical, at a critical time for their business. So with that being said, you know, again, we're looking at a period of, I don't know, I'm not even going to guess, maybe a few more months where this, where the governor's emergency declaration may finally be rescinded. It may stay in its current form for, or actually, maybe slightly less restricted, but still be considered an emergency declaration. So I just want you all to be aware that that's the intention of this, that it's directly related to COVID, public health emergency. So with that being said, again, what are your thoughts on a $10,000 cap with a $100,000 amount made available? And then the 0% loan?
Joe?
Yes, sir, Jerry.
You know, I think even if they would lift all the restrictions today, it's still going to take these people, some of these smaller businesses and stuff, it's going to take them two or three weeks at least--
Sure.
--to get started again. So I see where they could use funds.
So maybe we could open it up, maybe till the end of the year, if you would, and when it's gone, it's gone. But that would--
Till the end of the year might be a little long, but--
Well, most of what the federal and state government are doing, as far as, I know the federal government with a lot of their programs are going till the end of the year. But that's just a suggestion, we could go six months, we could go three months from when this thing starts. Alan, do you have any thoughts on that?
You know, I don't have a good sense yet of how long it's going to take for companies to navigate through this multi-phase reopening. So, you know, I don't know if you want to set a six-month kind of timeline, or something that affects them, can revisit then, or three months and revisit at that point?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a great suggestion. I think, Jerry, you're kind of thinking the right way. I was kind of, after I had read one of the agreements at another community in Dunham, they stopped it when the emergency order was lifted. I know, that may, that may be pretty tough to try and figure out, and if they would happen to lift it quickly, you're right, this isn't going to end the economic distress.
No, it's not. It's going to take them a few weeks, or even a couple of months to get going again.
This is Diane, Mike is trying to call in.
So any further, any thoughts? I'd like to hear from you all on the, at least maybe the timeframe that these would be available.
This is Josh.
Josh, go ahead.
Yep, my question actually isn't with the timeframe, although I do think Jerry brought up a great point with the economic hardship probably lasting beyond just the emergency declaration, you know, being lifted. I don't think you're going to snap your fingers and see businesses rebounding immediately. So setting a timeline makes sense, you know, and three months, and then if there's no funds, if there are no more funds, if they've been exhausted, obviously, you can revisit if more funds are needed, or if that was enough. But anyway, my question, this might be for Alan, goes back to the cap of $10,000 that you're talking about, Mayor. If there's a Warsaw city business that applies for job retention, a job retention loan versus working capital, are they still restricted to just $10,000, or can they get $10,000 from the city and $10,000 from, you know, from KEDCO itself, I guess, to get that $20,000? Or are they strictly adhering just to the $10,000 that the city can provide?
No, Alan and I had a discussion about that this morning, and the city funds would be used as you all direct them, but those businesses are still within the county and would, could utilize, you know, if there were OKRA funds available for low to moderate income, if there was a requirement for another $10,000 for job retention, but those funds would come from other buckets within that revolving, not revolving, within that emergency fund. Alan, was that our understanding today?
I think it's accurate. I think, you know, we'll work to find the best source of money. If we are successful with OKRA funds and can provide somebody a $20,000 loan, and that's a better fit, and see how longer-term with some interest behind it, you know, we can steer somebody that direction if they really would be better served by a $10,000 loan. And that's a cap, so it could be $5,000, but it has to be $10,000. You know, if they really just need a $5,000 loan for a shorter timeframe, zero interest, you know, we'll just try to find the right fit. I don't want to try to, you know, force somebody one way or the other, but I do like that we have some options. And KEDCO also has $40,000 of the USDA funds to loan out. That's for job creation. That's another element where if somebody is, you know, pursuing an opportunity where they can create some jobs, we'll steer them that direction.
Josh, does that answer your question?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you. I heard someone else in there.
Yeah, Jeff Gro speaking. I would favor, Mayor, the extension for six months to a year, which Jerry and you were talking about. The other thing is, the layman in me talking, 90 days, payback right away, I would suggest the council consider extending that timeframe to maybe six months before payback. Just a suggestion to think about.
Anybody have any thoughts on the delay to make the first payment? Alan, what was your, I'm looking through here. Were you 90 days on the first payment, or did you, you didn't have that in here, I don't believe?
I don't believe we specified that yet.
Yeah.
KEDCO's loan program historically, I think, has really tried to make that specific to the borrower and their needs. But we don't, you know, we're not going to go out, you know, 12 months before we necessarily start repayment, but trying to make sure we can match up with their ability to repay and have sufficient latitude there, but also, again, being responsible with the funds and, you know, wanting to make sure we pay our other dollars.
So maybe we could kind of put a cap on when that first payment, how far out they could extend, as well as--
Yeah, this is Diane.
Yes, Diane.
I also, I also think, you know, listening to Governor Holcomb, that we could go in and out of this emergency order phase, and we could go in and out of being able to operate and then have to shut down again. We really don't know what's ahead. And so, I like the idea of it being a longer timeframe that might, you know, even possibly extend, and that it wouldn't start until like January 1st of next year. And that's almost the same as the six months, so I'd be fine with the six months. But I think that we don't want to make it so restrictive that we have to keep coming back and changing it, because circumstances are changing.
As far as, Jeff, I think you'd mentioned on the payment of the loan, were you talking about that, or were you just talking about the delay in making the first payment?
Yeah, I was referring to the delay, and I do appreciate Diane's words. I agree with that. I just, I just would like some of the dust to settle a little bit before we start going after people to pay it back.
So, so what I'm hearing is maybe, instead of 90 days, maybe double that as a cap and let the loan committee, again, match up to that six-month period to get that first payment. Remember, if, and again, this is probably our next point of discussion, if we go zero interest, then there's no interest to be paid. Some of these that have been set up would be like interest-only, which is a really small amount up to a certain point, but we would not have that feature if we decided to go a zero-interest loan. The other ones I've seen, there was a 1% interest, which, you know, again, $10,000, that's a hundred bucks a year. So, you know, is it worth putting an interest provision in there? That does keep people maybe paying a little something to begin with, but if you go 0% at six months, you know, you're pretty much, and I'm okay with that, I just want to make sure we all understand how that's going to work. Then would you consider 24-month repayment, as I've suggested here, from that period, from the six-month period on, then they have another 24 months to pay it? So now you're at essentially 30 months before it's to be paid back at zero interest. Or do you count that six months as the first six months with zero interest, and then you can defer a payment for six months? Again, any thoughts on that?
Mayor Jeff Gro speaking. I would say 0%, and you allow that extension, six months, and then add 24 or 36 more. I think these very difficult times, the amount of money, it is a lot of money, but really it's not. I would like to err on being very friendly. Kindness as a public institution, it's EDIT funds-- very friendly. Kindness as a public institution, it's Edit Funds, um, to, to support these businesses that are struggling. My, my comments.
All right. Anyone else?
Mayor, this is Mike.
Okay, Mike, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry I'm late. Out of my routine, out of my comfort zone, I guess. I've been listening, and, uh, I like what I'm hearing from Councilman Gross. Uh, I know as a businessman that, uh, we have been shut down for a month, and, uh, I don't think things are going to just, we're not going to pick up where we left off. It's going to take a while to ramp back up. And I think, uh, the more leniency and compassion that, in, in the form of timeline that we can show, the better. And if things get better quicker, I'm sure that, uh, I know in my case, if things got better, I would be more than happy to pay it back sooner rather than later.
So Mike, I think I got to stop you for just a second. Um, probably before you joined us, uh, I asked if there was anyone that potentially, um, would be considering applying for this loan. And, uh, we were advised by the city attorney, as if, if you're thinking about applying for this loan, um, you really should not comment on it and not vote on it. Um, so I, I just want to put that out there. I, I-
Understand.
Yeah.
That never occurred to me. Uh, I don't know that I will, but I will, I will refrain from any more comments.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, who's this?
This, this is Jack.
Okay, Jack, go ahead.
Okay, so, uh, I'll echo what, uh, Mike, uh, just stated there, just, uh, to make sure that, uh, that all gets in there. Um, the 24-month loan repayment period starting 90 days after the loan closes, I, I like the idea of it going, uh, getting past maybe even a second wave of this thing, uh, which I'm, I'm guessing is going to be in the fall sometime. So, uh, I, I do like that feature that, uh, Councilman Thresh brought up. Um, getting back to, uh, one of the points, I, I'm not sure that we answered it, as far as the $10,000 loan cap per business. And I, I'm going to kind of ask Alan here, uh, you know, I would like to help as many businesses as possible, you know, uh, $10,000 with the $100,000 that we've got means we can help 10. If we could help 20 by going 5,000, that'd be great, but maybe 5,000 isn't enough to really help anybody. So Alan, I'm, I'm going to kind of lean on you and, and ask you, uh, with, with your experience, what, uh, what, what, what you think is, is a better cap?
That's a great question. I, I don't have a, an answer based on, um, anything more than, than history, uh, whereas, you know, in, in the past, I think, uh, you know, companies, you know, clients we worked with, uh, would have, you know, come to us looking for more of the $10,000, uh, kind of dollar range. Uh, but of course, this is all different. So we may find that, uh, smaller loan amounts are still attractive if companies are, are just looking for a little bit extra help to get through. I guess, might defer to the mayor if he's, if he's, uh, heard from any of the other, any of his colleagues around the state, uh, with other programs. I know, um, I, I certainly have seen, uh, examples of other programs around the state seem to focus on, on smaller dollar amounts.
Right.
$2,500, $5,000. Um, certainly, the lower the dollar amount, we want to be more careful, you know, how much paperwork we'll try to acquire. And even if we were to adopt, let's say it would be a $10,000 cap, I mean, our preference would be to make smaller loans where possible. They'd try to get the most, uh, out of the dollars we can. But again, want to defer to the mayor if you've got any, any insight elsewhere.
Well, I, I do have an example. Uh, again, I think I'd mentioned I, I talked to another community that had set this up, and they put $100,000 in, and they capped it at 7,500. And, uh, within a week or two, they had 12 loans for 7,500 bucks, um, you know, already spoken for and, and approved. So it, it, it was certainly, um, that dollar amount worked, and it was a similar-sized community to ours. And again, I think it targeted more the, you know, the, the smaller businesses. So I, I think, Jack, I, I hear you. I'd, I'd like to help as many businesses as we can. And you know, to be quite honest with you, uh, if, if we say tonight we're going to start with $100,000, uh, maybe, um, we kind of see, uh, how it goes. And, you know, maybe we can come back, and, and if you all are so led, um, you know, we could provide more. Um, and, you know, I don't think it precludes us from, from doing anything. Uh, again, I was just trying to get you all to think about what would be a, a reasonable, uh, starting point for this. And, you know, if we start at 10,000 and those get snapped up in the first week, you know, then we have to assume maybe we did something right. Uh, and if there's that much demand, uh, maybe, maybe we come back, uh, and, and talk about maybe doing more. Uh, and, and again, look at the profile of who's borrowing and what their needs are. Um, again, I, I think that's the beauty of, of KEDCO, uh, having that, that ability to sit down and, and purely from a, a commerce and business aspect, look at these businesses, look how long they've been in, in business, you know, look at what their, how their businesses are functioning, and, and really try and help those businesses, uh, that, that are, are doing everything they can but are just caught up in, in this, uh, this horrible impact of, of what's been going on. So I don't think we're boxing ourselves into a corner, uh, if, if we maybe start at, at a certain amount. Um, but I, I, I do agree with you all that, you know, you want to make it, um, attractive so that it is, is a, a true, um, help for someone who needs it.
Mayor, this is Mike. Can I ask a question? Uh, I was late to the dance, and again, I apologize. Who, who's putting up the funding for this?
This, the money's coming from the Edit Fund, and it, it would be, uh, forgivable, excuse me, non-forgivable. It would not be a grant. It would be, uh, a, a low-interest or zero-interest loan.
Okay. And what happens if you, if the money is loaned to a business and, uh, for whatever reason, they, they go out of business?
Well, then we don't get paid back. And Alan, I, I don't know that, um, you've got the clawback that a bank might have. Can you, I, I don't know if you could shed a little light onto that?
Well, that's another decision, whether, you know, that you want to see the loans to be secured in some way or unsecured. I mean, if, if we're talking about working capital to help with payroll, um, I think our, 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 our past, uh, practice would be that, that it's more of an unsecured, um, working loan, working capital loan, unless we would have a personal guarantee of some kind. Um, but certainly that's another consideration we could add, and, and frankly, we haven't, haven't, uh, set all the terms, uh, you know, figured out yet with OKRA. That may be something they ask for as well.
Yeah, and, and again, there's a, there's a, there's another argument, uh, as you look at, you know, should we cap this? You know, uh, would you rather make smaller loans to more people, and, and then that way, if there is a default, um, you know, maybe, uh, the impact is less, less on our, our Edit Fund?
I like that idea.
The only, the only thing, this is Jack. The only thing there that I'm concerned about, and I know I brought it up, uh, is if we, if we cap it lower, are, are we doing the good that we need to do?
Right. Uh, there's a balance there, obviously, and I, I think you all are hitting on great points. Uh, and again, I'm just, I think, I think if we set it up under, with X amount, you know, maybe we just do a pilot. Maybe we just do half of that, set it up 10,000 and see who's going after it, and then we can, uh, come back and, and tailor it after that, maybe to, you know, to meet, um, maybe unforeseen needs.
Are these loans to be given to businesses within the city limits only?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
The KEDCO loan program is for the county, but our funds are strictly for, um, Warsaw-
Okay.
-based businesses.
This is Diane.
Go ahead.
Um, I know in, um, the document from Alan, he had that the business needed to be in business for at least 24 months in order to apply for the loan. Um, I don't see that same thing, um, in our guidelines, but that would be one thing that if we carried that over into our guidelines, it would, um, maybe give us a little bit more of an assurance that the business would be more invested in staying in business than if we happened to, you know, loan to a startup, um, company.
Diane, I, I took care of that. When I, I added the fourth bullet point, and the last sentence says, "All other terms in this description will apply." So I was, I was trying to follow all of those items.
Okay.
Uh, but, but restrict our funds. Yes. Go ahead.
All right. So that would include all the bullet points under what is needed to imply, to apply?
Right. The only bullet point that would be different would be those that are conflicting with the, the cap amount, the interest, uh, the payback period with no forgivable provisions. And first payment due in 90 days. I mean, those, those were set up, again, they were starting points, and obviously I'm hearing some great discussion tonight. Um, does anybody have any other comments?
Yes, this is Mike, and one, one other thought, uh, one of the criteria or, 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 you know, ways to look at this might be, uh, I'm sure they're going to have to fill out some kind of an application. Uh, I know that some money has been distributed for the I, uh, EIDL, some money has been distributed for the Triple P. Um, some businesses are getting those, some have not seen anything. Uh, one of the things we might consider looking at would be asking that particular business, have you received any funds from another source? Uh, because, uh, you know, they, they've run out once after, what was it, 13 days? I know they're going to, uh, have another tranche of 350 billion. Uh, who knows how long that's going to last. But people, we really, I think, in my opinion, that we want to help our, our small businesses, that we want to keep, you know, our small businesses vibrant. And we got to get through this. Uh, we don't want to end up with a ghost town. So that might be one way, uh, one other, one other metric we can use to see who's, who's going to get some money, is if they're getting money from another source or not.
Right. We've had that discussion early on. That was one of the first things that came up, and, um, there could be, uh, some discussion, uh, about that. Uh, it was felt that the, uh, at least my take was that the committee has that, um, ability to look at all the factors. Um, maybe they didn't get any money, maybe they didn't apply for any money. And, you know, maybe there was no money available. They applied for it and it wasn't available. But I, I think, um, your point is very well taken. Um, however, I, I think sticking those finer points in here, um, may take away a little bit of the flexibility of the, of the loan committee, uh, unless you have a strong feeling that anybody that's received a, an SBA loan or, or received federal help should not be, um, should, should not qualify. And, and I don't think we want to do that. Um, but again, that, we've had that discussion and-
Shouldn't get anything.
Well, Alan, do you want to respond to this?
Consider.
Alan, do you want to, uh, respond the way you did?
It's really our, yeah, it's our responsibility to help people find the best source of funding. I mean, you know, I, I, I can imagine scenarios where, um, yeah, the easier road may be to apply for this, uh, this relief from the city, but, you know, we'd find that a company would actually be eligible for more funding from the idle loan or paycheck protection. And so, yes, you know, might work with them, you know, as a bridge loan with some local support, but still would want to encourage them, uh, to pursue the, the other resources if they can get more dollars. Anyway, I mean, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Um-
Jeff.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Jeff Gross speaking.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I would like to seriously consider erring on the side of, uh, the judgment and decisions made by the committee that would be established, because there's just so many moving parts I can't even imagine. So I'd like to trust the, uh, uh, the committee on that. And I'd also like to remind all of us, it's $100,000, which is a lot of money, but I think about our, our budget, revenue, services we provide. We do that because the business of America, welcome to Warsaw, is small business. And I would really like us to be looking at, let's throw out that life preserver for as many as we possibly can. Uh, this is Edit Funding, and this is also just the public, what is our purpose? It's to protect, solve problems. And I'd like us to be, uh, more aggressive, uh, rather than being reserved. Thank you.
All right. So I'm gonna, go ahead. Was there somebody else?
If you-
Let me kind of summarize. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
If you, uh, the only thing I was going to say, Mayor, is if you give $10,000 away, $100,000 isn't going to go very far. You've helped 10 businesses, and we need to be helping, in my opinion, more businesses than that.
So do you want to reduce the cap?
Well, you know, 7,500 might not be bad. Uh, for a small business, that's, that's a pretty good chunk of money.
So that goes from 10 to 12?
Awesome.
I mean, I'm, uh, whatever you guys want to do.
Bob, anyone?
So let's kind of summarize maybe this last half an hour, that, um, I think you all feel pretty strongly that delaying the payment instead of the 90 days as presented, I think, uh, a, a six-month delay in the first payment is more to your all's liking. Um, the 20, then, then the 24-month payback would kick in. Uh, so essentially, there would be a 30 months of use of interest-free funds, um, uh, with, with no payback until the seventh month. Um, again, 0% interest, uh, starting with $100,000. Uh, and again, I, I think wherever you set the cap, uh, I, I think, you know, you kind of look at this thing, maybe you err on the side of, of, um, making the, um, award a little bit more, um, useful by staying at the 10,000, but, um, you know, then, then look back at the profile of who borrowed, and maybe, maybe if it needs to be ratcheted down some, may, maybe that's too much. Maybe somebody doesn't want to borrow that much money, and they're afraid to borrow that much money. So I, there's so many, uh, factors here. Um, I just think it's, it's, it makes sense to, to decide on something and then give it a shot, uh, and, and see how the response is, and then we can, we can come back and adjust this. Or if you'd rather just start, maybe take half that money, maybe go 50,000?
Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor spitballing, and I liked $100,000, maybe related to what Mike said, maybe others' concerns, that you can get a maximum of 10,000, guaranteed minimum of 7,500 based on those that do apply and get approved by the committee. Um, you know, something that could be-
Go 5,000 there.
You know, a workout related to, you know, what Mike is thinking, where you can get a maximum, and there's a guaranteed minimum, you know, people come and they're knocking, beating the door down. Um, we, we could, again, that idea, help maybe a few more businesses. And then the neat thing is, like you said, I don't know how much is in that fund or what you're willing to do or what this body's willing to do, but we could revisit it in, you know, four to six weeks and see if we want to go round two.
Right. And, you know, the other option, and as, this is all good discussion, um, I listened to Lieutenant Governor on Friday talk about the number of people that applied for this OKRA money, and they just had an award amount. They didn't, a, a total amount that they were going to give away. They didn't talk about how much they were going to give. They didn't say, "We're going to give, uh, 10 applicants." Uh, so say it was a $4 million pot of CDBG money. They just didn't say, "We're going to give four applicants a million bucks." They kind of waited and saw how many applicants they had, and I think they'll adjust their award based on the number of applicants. So maybe it makes sense, uh, to not even list a maximum or a minimum and just have a pot and, and let the, um, uh, let the committee decide who needs what and, and see how that plays out. I mean, that's another thought.
Yeah, Jeff Gross, I like that idea. I'd like to hear what the other members of the council think. That's a good idea, Joe.
I like that idea.
Go ahead. Say your name.
I'd like to hear from Alan as to how difficult that would be. That sounds to me like that would put the committee in a real bind.
Um, so, yeah, that answered your question. I, I think we would have to be careful that we're looking for very specific needs to address, um, which actually then is, is really helpful to then, um, have, have to dig into, you know, what is the real need. Someone might list, have a list of five things they'd like help with, but, you know, we can get down to, well, hey, if we help you with items one and two, that's going to get you to the next step. step, and then we can, you know, find other sources of funding as well. Certainly, you know, appreciate, it is difficult for us to come up with, you know, what are the minimums, maximums, and the interest and having some flexibility? I think our commitment is, in the committee we have in place, it's all bankers, our business navigator, you know, her job is to do the intake and help people, you know, put together the best applications possible. So, you know, we're looking at this with a, you know, a really, you know, an eye toward maximizing the use of the funds and, and also making sure we're putting together good applications.
Alan, do you think it's, it's safe to say that the smaller, the cap, the, the smaller the maximum award, the smaller the business that will benefit from it?
I think it's a fair statement.
Yeah. So that kind of goes back to our discussion about, do you want to help a lot of the smaller businesses? Alan, I know you'd mentioned in, in your, your sheet that you're looking at businesses of 50 or less, and, you know, maybe, maybe the council wants to specifically look at, you know, mom and pop type businesses where there's maybe three or four people, maybe they want to look at 10 or less. I mean, not that we're going to, not that we're going to come to a number, but when it comes to an amount, I think the amount is going to kind of play to a certain level of business. And my thoughts as mayor is to help the smaller businesses that might be flying under the radar, that aren't, haven't tried to secure an SBA loan, tried and failed, and are still having trouble. You know, I'm, I'm kind of just thinking out loud, you know, the, the smaller businesses, if you will. Jerry, you had a comment?
Joe.
Hang on, please. Hang on, please. Jerry?
You know, I think if you say this 10,000, you know, that might scare some of these smaller businesses away. They think, they might only need 2,000 or 3,000 to do what they want to do, but they might be afraid, well, no use even putting in an application because it says $10,000.
Yeah. It is a cap, but you're right. I mean, I, I agree with you. Mike, did you have something to say?
I, I firmly agree with what you said, Joe. I, we, we want to help our small businesses of, I was thinking maybe 15 employees or less. I'm, I'm thinking our family-owned restaurants, our family-owned shops that, that, you know, keep the, the community going, that pay the taxes for the schools and the fire and the police, and those are the businesses we are really going to need when, when this ends. We, like I said before, we don't want to end up with a ghost town.
So again, I, I don't think we're going to hone in on a specific level of business, but I think whatever level we set as a maximum or as a cap per business will kind of set the stage for who applies. So I, I'd say, I'd say three options, 5,000, 7,500, or 10,000 as a cap, to try and get this discussion going, if you will, and it's been good. Jerry?
Well, you know, if you set at 5,000, that means 20 people could certainly apply.
Yep.
And that would certainly help a lot more businesses, a lot more people possibly.
Sure. Okay. Anybody else?
And if we capped it at 5,000, this is Jack, if we capped it at 5,000, that doesn't preclude them from going anyplace else to get a loan, does it?
Doesn't preclude them from what?
It doesn't keep them from getting loan anyplace else. It's not like the, well, yeah, I guess Alan did say they, they might be able to get some from the other side of KEDCO as well.
Okay. Anybody else? Jeff, Diane, what are your thoughts on, on a cap?
Jeff speaking, I have no problem with going up to 10,000. It's like Alan said, and I think the committee, the expertise there, they could navigate through this. I don't want it to be so small that some will look at it and say, "I need more. Why would I go here?"
Right.
And I, I, again, would trust the committee to sit down with the applicants and work through what actually do you need, basically, how can we help you? And again, they have the expertise. I don't. I can't speak for others on the board, I don't, but boy, I put my trust in Alan and his group to work through this to really, again, back to that life preserver, help, whether it's 12, 10, 5, or whatever it may be, or more, up to 20 businesses.
Josh?
I would be inclined, considering they can work with KEDCO and get additional funding as well. I think 5,000 is probably not enough money. I think, I don't want to say that, but some people certainly only need $5,000, and that's great. I think $10,000 would be more valuable to most of the businesses that are looking to get through these times.
All right. Anybody else?
Question, this is Mike, if we say a cap of 10,000, does that mean they're going to get 10,000?
That means it's a cap. That means they can apply for X amount up to 10,000.
Yeah, because I would like to see us try to help as many as we can, and if we give everybody the 10, then we've only helped 10 businesses, which is better than nothing, but if we could help more businesses, that'd be better.
This is Diane, and I think it's just a matter of semantics at this point that we're discussing.
Yep.
And perhaps it could just be worded differently and say that the loan amount can be up to 10,000 or not to exceed 10,000. Everybody knows what not to exceed means if they don't understand cap. So I think we could just change the semantics and then make it more clear to those businesses that only want, like Jerry said, 2,000 or 3,000, that, yeah, this is for you.
Okay. That kind of seems to be the consensus. Is there anybody that's really opposed to that? Okay. So what if we keep our 100,000 first round available, not to exceed $10,000, 0% interest, first payment not due till after six months, 180 days, and then 24 months to pay it back, again, at 0% interest? Does anybody feel compelled to make a motion to approve that? Or do we need more?
This is Diane, and I'll make a motion to approve that as stated.
All right. Motion's been made by Diane. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Jeff Gross, second.
Jerry just seconded. So we'll go through a roll call vote with Lynn.
Counselor Dobbin?
Oh, she's abstaining. Are you, okay.
Cindy, do you abstain? Cindy, did you mute your button?
Unmute, Cindy. Do you abstain? Okay.
Will Hyde?
Aye.
Gross?
Yes.
Finch?
Aye.
Quants?
I will abstain, Lynn.
Aye. I'm going to move the motion.
Sorry about that. Quanderas abstaining?
Yes.
So that would be.
Jerry.
Oh, Jerry, I'm sorry. He made the second.
Okay, so you're, okay. All right. So the ayes have it, five with two abstentions. What we will do are take these terms to the Board of Works, and I will fashion an MOU that this will be funded from, from Edit Funds, $100,000. These funds will be made available to KEDCO for the use in their emergency relief program, meeting their stipulations and, and the administration of this, but limiting the funds to a not-to-exceed amount of $10,000 per applicant within the city limits. The terms would be 0% with a six-month delay in purchase and a 24-month payback period at the end of six months. So we will put that together for the Board of Works, and I believe we'll be ready to help some businesses in our community. Thank you all for the very thoughtful discussion. I, I do believe that we will take a look at this, keep a good close watch on it. And I, I guess one other thing I wanted to ask, it was mentioned early on that we don't eliminate this loan once the governor's emergency, public health emergency is lifted. I, I think I heard either six months from when the loan starts, the loan program starts, or through the end of the year. I, I think we need a consensus on that as well. So does anybody have any thoughts on that?
Mr. Mayor, this is Jack, I would go at least until the end of the year.
All righty. Question or thoughts?
This is Diane, I suggested the end of the year, and I, I'm still leaning that way.
Okay. Anybody else?
I'm for the end of the year.
All right. Jerry's, Jerry mentioned the end of the year, obviously. Any other, any discussion? If not, I'll call the question.
I'll make a motion that we approve, accepting applications through December 31, 2020.
Or until the funds are, are, are gone.
Or until they're completed, yeah.
Okay. All right. Is there a second to that?
I know it's the first, yeah.
Jerry seconded that. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Whoops, excuse me. Roll call vote. I don't know.
Cindy, are you still there? Will Hyde?
Aye.
Gross?
Yes.
Finch?
Aye.
Quanderas?
Probably best if I abstain again.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all for the very thoughtful discussion. Again, I, I think we're entering into the next phase of this issue as, as we start to emerge from the public health crisis, and, and certainly not suggesting that we're out of the woods yet. As we mentioned, the governor extended two more weeks for the stay-at-home today. We've done the same here in the city. It's looking like, from the discussions that have been had, that we have made an impact as far as the numbers in the state, and I, I think the governor's got a team within the state and within the region, six other governors, that they're looking at how best to gradually move us away from these restrictions. Moving away from the restrictions is, again, going to be just one part of this. Obviously, we're going to have impact on our businesses for some time, and I, I think this is a good, a good foot forward for our community to show that we care about the businesses in our community and we're willing to, to help those small businesses that are in need, and hopefully this will be a, a program that'll be useful and impactful to them. So thank you all for the good thoughtful discussion. I, I think we came up with a great program. And Alan, thank you so much for your time and your leadership on this. We'll get you that MOU, get that signed, and we'll be open for business.
Appreciate the invitation, I go.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Any other comments? All right. Hearing none. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Jerry moves. Is there a second?
I can, Diane, I'll second.
Okay. Lynn, you're going to have to take a roll call vote to see if we can adjourn.
I'm giving Jack the second, Diane, he jumped in before you did, so.
Okay, well, Cooper's going outside now, so he's adjourned.
Okay, so Quants?
She said yes.
Yes.
Fresh, Jerry motioned. Mike?
Yes, Lynn. The aye. And Mayor, thank you for a great discussion. This was really interesting, and again, my apologies for being late.
No worries. Thanks for, thanks for making it.
Gross?
Yes, sir. You did a great.
Yes.
Did we forget anybody? Josh Finch.
Yes, I, aye.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you all. Thank you all. Good night.
Good night.
Night, bye.
Bye, Cooper.
Done.